We ask for those same blessings in 2014. We ask you to go into those households and those families who have virtually nothing, who persons who are homeless, those persons who are hungry, feed them, house them. We ask you to give relief to the communities in West Virginia who are affected by water and all persons who are affected by storms, natural catastrophes, and weather this time of the year. We ask you to give us the ability to do this job in a fair and just manner. These are the blessings we ask of them. Amen.
Pardelle.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. The clerk will please call the roll.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Win?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. I'm sorry to start a couple of minutes late, but we were working on city business, I promise you. For those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the process which we will follow tonight is the first thing we'll do is we're going to take up public hearings. We'll go through them just, we'll call them just the way they are numbered on the printed docket, and then we'll move to the regular agenda, and we'll go the same way. And at the conclusion of the regular agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, that's something that's not on the printed docket, you'll be given that opportunity. All we ask is that you sign up before the meeting by signing a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers. Now, before we get that, and it looks to me like most of you are here for this, the council has a resolution which we would like to present to the Norfolk Saints. And is Coach Wilson here? Can you come to the podium, please, Coach? We have a resolution for all of the Norfolk Saints, all the players, and I'll read the resolution, and council wants to express its great pride in the performance of the Saints during the year and for its national championship, and we've invited you to be here so we could tell you that, and so we've issued this resolution, Coach, and we'll, let me read it, it reads, "Whereas the Norfolk Saints Athletic Association was established in 2003 to stimulate interest and participation in football and cheerleading and to instill lifelong values of teamwork, dedication, and superior work ethic. Whereas playing under the National Charter of Pop Warner Little Scholars, the Norfolk Saints Division II Junior Pee Wee Football Team was southeastern Virginia and mid-south regional champions for the 2013 season. Whereas their undefeated season culminated with a victory over the Bedford Heights Saints from Ohio on December 13, 2013, at the 57th Annual Pop Warner Division II Junior Pee Wee Super Bowl Championship in Orlando, Florida. Whereas under the leadership of head coach Jonathan T. Wilson, the Norfolk Saints have distinguished themselves as a national powerhouse on the playing field and in the classroom, and this is a source of great pride for the players, their families, and the coaching staff. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Norfolk hereby congratulates the Norfolk Saints Division II Junior Pee Wee Football Team on the occasion of winning the 2013 Pop Warner Division II Junior Pee Wee Super Bowl. Section two, that this resolution be recorded in the permanent proceedings of the City Council and a copy thereof be presented to Coach Wilson and his team." And Coach, on a resolutions like this, the City Council generally votes, and so why don't you call the roll, please, Mr. Clerk?
Adopt the resolution, Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations. We would love to hear from you. Please. Don't go anywhere.
First off, I just want to give honor to the Lord and Savior who's first and foremost in my life. Thank you all for allowing us to be here. These are a fine group of young men. They take pride first and foremost in academics. We believe that you have two type of athletes. You have an athlete and a student, or you have a student-athlete, and we preach student-athletes first, and our kids have represented that as well as the city of Norfolk as we traveled around the country, and I'm sure their parents can attest to that. So, we thank you all for giving us an opportunity to be for your presence, and this is truly a great accomplishment for the city as well as our organization, as well as our kids. So, we do thank you.
Well, Coach, you know, we thank you, believe me, and we are honored to have all of you here. Could we have the players stand up? Thanks, so we can, yeah, why don't you come on up? And maybe if any of the parents want to take a picture, and Coach, I'm going to give you all of these resolutions, they're one for each player, and if you're, they're lots of great-looking group.
Mayor, can I say one thing as they come up?
Sure.
I have had the pleasure of having two grandchildren play for Pop Warner, a couple ages down years, and they really do a fantastic job. And while I have the council and the city manager, I want to commit that we're going to let these guys play a couple of games at Powhatan Field this year.
Right.
So, the manager, are you going to make that happen for us?
Let's do it.
Okay. All right. So, you heard that, and we'll have Saints Day out there.
I love the ties.
Yeah.
They're cute.
Yeah.
Stand up.
You guys look good with your ties.
Stand up.
Yeah.
Everybody, okay, guys, we'd like to get in a picture with you.
Are we in it?
Yeah.
Sort of.
Yeah, kinda.
It's balanced, look at the color in there.
Yeah, it's great.
What are the ages?
How old are they?
Oh, great.
How old are they? What are the age ranges?
Nine, ten, and eleven.
He plays for Mari.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Football team.
Which camera?
Okay. Again, thank you all for coming down. Thanks for allowing us. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And Coach, Coach Wilson?
Some of you and I haven't done.
If y'all need to leave, we understand.
We will do.
Okay. It may get a little long. If the parents need to go, it's okay.
Not even sure I ever dreamed about it. Turn now, man.
These guys do a hell of a job out there, I'm telling you.
They're so cute.
There's no reason.
Mr. Riddick?
Okay.
All right, okay.
Okay, while the team is leaving, I'd also like to acknowledge the presence of Boy Scout Troop 381 from St. Pius Parish, along with scout leader Tom Welch, and I know they're here fulfilling a badge requirement, so why don't we let the Boy Scouts stand up too, who are here with us this evening?
All right.
Okay. Thank you all. Okay. All right, public hearing one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on October 22, 2013, on the application of Tidewater Commerce Center to amend the future land use map of the city's general plan from industrial to commercial and for change of zoning from limited industrial to conditional district on property located at 630 and 660 Tidewater Drive. By four-two vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Okay, we have a number of folks here who are here to answer questions if there aren't any from the council. Vince Mastrocco is here. Brian Goodlow is here as well, from the applicant Andrew Fine. Bob Miller, Moore's Fine, have all signed up to see if anyone has any questions here. There is no one to speak in opposition. Mr. Clerk?
I'll make it really very brief.
Okay.
I'm Vince Mastrocco, 150 West Main Street, Kaufman and Cannol's, 2351. Maybe Coach Wilson could spend some time in Charlottesville and consulting with. Mayor Frame, members of the council, this is a real good, excellent opportunity for us in the city to identify a commercial site in Ward Four, right on Tidewater Drive. It's really, it's, there are only a few four-acre sites that are available, but there's really a problem because it's, this is, at this point, it's not a viable commercial center because there's difficulty getting into the site off of Tidewater Drive. We have submitted a plan to Mr. Kifer, who's working with us and talking to us about the ingress to the site. We've gone over a plan with him. There is a left-turn lane at May and East Charlotte that goes into the school, but in order to get to this site, you'd have to go there, make a U-turn, and go back to the site. So, we respectfully asking the council to ask the manager and Mr. Kifer to work with us to determine whether or not we can have a left-turn lane, only just a left-turn lane off of Tidewater Drive. Again, there is already a left-turn lane, but it's further, about 500 feet up, but as a commercial site, which was really the reluctance that we had coming forward until we had this resolved, because we simply can't lease a property that is so securitously approached. So, we really do, we do need some, we do need some help, and we need the city to work with us. I've been meeting with Mr. Kifer, he certainly did not make any kind of commitment that he would, that he would allow us to do the lane, and by the way, the developer is going to, you know, would pay for the stack lane and the fencing and all those things that are required, but he said he would work with us, but, and that's wonderful, but we've really, you know, it just doesn't work without ingress. Now, we've agreed not to have a left-turn lane out of the site, we did right-turn only, but we really need your help to come up with a plan.
Well, I'm not, I don't believe the manager would commit to it tonight until he has had an opportunity.
Sure.
What's your pleasure? We can continue this for two weeks?
I think that would be better, because it's just, it's just, it just doesn't work otherwise.
There isn't any opposition to it that I'm aware of. Everybody wants this to happen.
Right.
But, you know, just to be sure, why don't we give the administration two weeks, and by then we'll have a recommendation from them as well, okay?
Good, thanks.
So, that would be the 28th, right?
Yes, sir. January 28th.
Well, thanks very much.
Thanks, thanks, thanks.
And the motion is to continue the matter until June 28th, until January 28th?
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on December 10, 2013, on the application of Eastern Virginia Medical School by Mark Babishanian for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of .61 acres of unimproved right-of-way, more or less, at the northwest corner of Colley Avenue and Bramleton Avenue.
And Mr. Richardson is here to answer any questions. There's, he's the only person signed up. I'm not aware of any opposition.
And it's a six-zero recommendation from the planning commission.
All right, then call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of Colley Avenue and authorizing the conveyance to the abutting property owner of any interest the city may have in the underlying fee of said portion of Colley Avenue, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing three, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on December 10, 2013, on the application of Eastern Virginia Medical School by Mark Babishanian for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of .61 acres of unimproved right-of-way, more or less, at the northwest corner of Colley Avenue and Bramleton Avenue.
And Mr. Richardson is here to answer any questions. There's, he's the only person signed up. I'm not aware of any opposition.
And it's a six-zero recommendation from the planning commission.
All right, then call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of Colley Avenue and authorizing the conveyance to the abutting property owner of any interest the city may have in the underlying fee of said portion of Colley Avenue, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing three, please.
Public hearing three scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on December 10, 2013, to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Terrence Winfield and Betty M. Winfield on property located at 1823 Tidewater Drive.
Okay, you can call the roll. There's no one signed up to address the council on this matter.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Terrence M. and Betty M. Winfield of a certain parcel of property acquired by the City of Norfolk pursuant to section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing five, please.
Public hearing five scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on December 10, 2013, on the application of the EA's Little Blessings by Eli Anthony to amend Plan Norfolk 2030 from single-family traditional to commercial and for rezoning from R11, moderate-density multifamily, to conditional C1 limited commercial on property located at 956 and 960 Berkeley Avenue Extended, and by six-zero vote, planning commission recommends approval.
And Mr. Hollis Ellis is here to answer any questions, if anyone has any. Okay, you can call the roll, please.
I have two ordinances for this. First is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation for property located at 956 and 960 Berkeley Avenue Extended from single-family to commercial, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Now, public hearing five.
Public hearing five scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on December 10, 2013, on the application of the First Church of God by Reverend Harold Boyd to amend the general plan from institutional to single-family suburban and for rezoning from conditional institutional district to R7 single-family on property located at 8620 Granby Street. By six-zero vote, planning commission recommends approval.
All right, you can call the roll, please.
I have two ordinances. First is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the land use designation for property located at 8620 Granby Street from institutional to single-family suburban, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance to rezone property located at 8620 Granby Street from conditional IN1 to R7, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing seven?
Six, Mr. President.
Six, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Public hearing six scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on December 10, 2013, on the application of the City of Norfolk on behalf of the Fairmont Park Civic League to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk, sections 11-11 pedestrian commercial overlay district and 11-41 Lafayette Boulevard pedestrian commercial and residential overlay district in order to revise certain development standards, planning commission recommends this on a six-zero vote.
Call the roll.
I have an ordinance to amend sections 11-11 and 11-41 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk, 1992, so as to modify the regulations of development standards for the Lafayette Boulevard pedestrian commercial and residential overlay district, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing seven.
Public hearing seven scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on December 10, 2013, on the application of the Norfolk Airport Authority by Tim Boykin to amend Chapter 10 of the zoning ordinance, Table 10A, for special-purpose districts in order to allow additional land uses within the general airport district. By six-zero vote, planning commission recommends.
And Anita Poston and Wayne Shank and Tim Boykin are here to answer questions on behalf of the airport, if anyone has any. Or you can call the roll.
I have an ordinance to amend and reordain Table 10 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk, 1992, in order to modify the uses permitted in the general airport district, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing eight, please.
Public hearing eight scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on December 17, 2013, to hear comments on the amendment to a lease with Cleo Ruby Inc., Todd Church as. To adjust the rental rate and to extend the term of the lease for an additional five years on property located at 150 West Main Street.
Call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving an agreement to lease with Cleo Ruby Inc. for the use of certain space in the SunTrust Building, dispensed with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank you. All right, now the regular agenda. R1, please.
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception to Arthur Hopkins to permit the resumption of a non-conforming multiple-family residential use on property located at 1700 Kingston Avenue, and the planning commission recommends denial on this matter, Mr. President.
All right, there are four members of the public who have signed up to address the council on this matter. When I call your name, please, if you'll come to the podium, identify yourself with a record by giving us your full name, please, and your present home address, and then we would like you to limit your remarks to three minutes. Arthur Hopkins.
Me too. I live at 1623 Kingston Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia, 23503. Yes, sir. I've been a lifelong resident for the city of Norfolk. I was born on Bramleton Avenue in 1921 and have lived here all my life. My purpose here today is to try to get you to do the same consideration for my special exception as you have done with others. The equal protection provision of the United States and Virginia Constitution requires equal and fair treatment for everyone. The Supreme Court of Virginia has ruled when a land use permitted to one landowner is restricted to another similarly situated, the description, the restriction is discriminatory, and if not substantially related to the public health, safety, or welfare constitutes a denial of equal protection of the law. When nothing, when nothing in the record shows use excluded would be more detrimental to the public welfare than use is permitted, equal protection is denied and constitutes taking of property without due process. On June 11, 2013, city council approved a special exception to permit the resumption of a non-conforming 14-unit multifamily apartment building located at 112 West 39th Street. This building is on a 50-foot lot without any parking spaces and is located in an R8 single-family-only zone district. On December the 15th, 2009, city council approved a special exception to permit the resumption of a non-conforming eight-unit multifamily apartment building located at 9507 Fourth Bay Street. The building was located in an R12 multiple-family zone district. I am asking you to provide equal and fair treatment for my special exception, the same as provided the above two properties. My eight-family apartment building is located at 1700 Kingston Avenue. It's in an R12 multiple-family zone district on a 50-foot lot with 13 off-street parking spaces. The building is in excellent condition, not bladed, and has never had a code violation. A meeting was held with the board of directors of the Bayview Civic League. No one opposed a special exception. All property owners in the 1700 block of Kingston Avenue were contacted, and no property owner opposed a special exception. All property owners in the 1600 block of Kingston Avenue, except one, was contacted, and no one, no one contacted, no contacted property owner opposed a special exception. Justice requires equal and fair treatment for my property, the same as provided other properties. I pray that you will approve my special exception. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Hopkins. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Linda Hopkins?
You would be Kathy? Lights. Lights. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Kathy Lights, and I currently live at 4225 Country Club Circle in Virginia Beach. I'm here on behalf of my dad, Arthur Hopkins, in his bid for a special exception to be granted for 1700 Kingston Avenue. My dad has lived in the city of Norfolk and, more specifically, Ocean View for most of his adult life. He's a veteran of World War II, having taken part in the battles of Midway and Guadalcanal aboard the USS Vincennes, which was later torpedoed by the Japanese and sunk. My sister and I are both lucky to be here today because of the tenacity he still exhibits inasmuch as 300-plus of his shipmates did not survive. After he and my mother were married in the late '40s, their first place was on one of the bay streets in Ocean View. Sometime in the early '50s, he bought land on Kingston Avenue, which back then was mostly sand dunes, in an effort to build apartments and provide affordable housing for the ever-growing military community. My sister and I were both born and raised on Kingston Avenue, having attended and graduated from Norfolk Public Schools. So you see, our family has a long history on this street and in the Ocean View community. Sometime in 1968, my dad decided to build another apartment building at the location in question, 1700 Kingston Avenue, consisting of eight one-bedroom Couples-Only units. The building is all brick and has since served the military community nicely. There came a time in the early '80s that the military declared Ocean View as off-limits to its members, saying it was no longer safe to live there. This was because of the increasing number of drug dealers and prostitutes that were drawn to the area, which slowly began dragging down the neighborhood. This was a terrible blow to landlords. Dad wouldn't rent to just anybody for the income. He was very particular and still is that way. He has always been somewhat of a watchdog and vigilant about strangers on the street and their activity. And I know for a fact, he has thwarted a few crimes in his 60-plus years of living there. I believe it was in this time period that the city decided to change the zoning of the neighborhood, including the fact that if you stopped renting your place for more than two years, you lose the original zoning, which for 1700 Kingston Avenue was as a multifamily eight-unit, multifamily eight-unit apartment building. The details and intricacies of this new code escaped my dad inasmuch as he himself was diagnosed with an autoimmune disease, myasthenia gravis, which required him to take large amounts of steroids and experimental drugs that sapped his energy and drive. Sometime during his remission, my mother was diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease, and he had a four-way bypass. I tell you this not for sympathy, but to make you aware that any thought of renting this building and/or dealing with the new zoning was not from front and center in his mind. Even with his own health problems, he took care of my mom and was her sole caregiver, feeding, clothing, bathing, dressing her, which was a 24/7 job, until her death in 2008. Which brings us to today.
Please, can you wrap it up?
Yes, yes. Even at the age of 92, you can still find him outside, cutting the grass, trimming the bushes, and doing the edging, which by the way is when a thief decided to slip into his apartment and walk out with his 42-inch TV set. The neighborhood still has a ways to go. But he firmly believes in the rule of law, the Constitution, and fairness, which is why he requests this exception, and as well as I, be granted, just as it was on the 39th Street building.
Thank you.
And the Fourth Bay Street building. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Linda Hopkins.
Hello, I'm Linda Hopkins, and I live at 2009 Oak Leaf Lane in Virginia Beach, and I want to fully support what my father and sister have said. As you have heard from them, there were extenuating circumstances. And since my, since my mother's death, my father has made considerable investment in 1700 Kingston Avenue to help modernize. So this was not a situation of an absentee landlord. It's just a man who has given to his country and to his community, and who is trying to, who has tried to deal with the hands that life, with the cards that life has given him. I sincerely ask the City Council for your consideration in granting this exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Dara Montague?
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me up here. My name is Dara Montague. I live at 1640 Kingston Avenue. I am currently in position of approximately 15 to 30 feet of the property in question. My point that I'm going to make very quickly is parking. We appreciate Mr. Hopkins, and I do see him out. He is very active. His generosity is great. He's out there, he's very active. However, it has been abandoned for over 20 years, this property. Where I live now, parking would literally, it is not accessible. It would take a crane to lift my vehicle up, to move it onto the public street parking. There was no way I would be possible to back out of my driveway to get out of it onto the public roadway. Insufficient parking is the main concern of this, and the fact that this place has been abandoned for over 20 years. That is pretty much our main concern. It is parking, very insufficient, time, they are changing. Parking may have been available 20 years ago when this was an active apartment complex. It is no longer. There are now insufficient parking with the numerous surrounding areas and the apartments. I've spoken to the neighbors. Of course, I don't have it in writing, they are not here to support me, but just talking in general, they're friends, off-street parking, there is not sufficient parking for people who already reside within, you know, a block radius of, from where I live. My place, my home, my residence, is directly involved in this apartment complex. We are the closest. I am 15 feet from where he would like to have parking. There is, it is impossible, I do not, I'm not sure if you have pictures of this location. It is physically impossible for me to back out of my own driveway to go onto a public street to go to work, if you allow this. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the list of folks who have signed up to speak.
What's the issue? The real issue?
Paul, I'll make a comment. I have some sympathy for Mr. Hopkins, but on the same token, I have sympathy for the people who live in Ocean View that fought for years to change the zoning so that we downzone this area. I know it was work of you, Paul, and my predecessor, to make sure that when this type of thing happens, that we, it's to eliminate density.
It was in 1987.
Yes. So this type of rule is what allowed us to take the travelers in and force them to not rebuild as an apartment, I mean, a hotel. Since this has been discussed, and we've asked for this to be delayed, both the Bayview and Cottage Line Civic Leagues have opposed this for that reason of opening up Pandora's Box, that by allowing this, you now allow other developments, including some other properties that Mr. Hopkins owns on that same street that are, have been vacant for the same amount of time, to be able now to be developed into high-density apartments, when the goal is, is to reduce density in these parts of Ocean View. So the community would love to see Mr. Hopkins turn this into a four-bedroom apartment, downsizing it, and using what's there, making these nice apartments and suites for families. But the fact that it's, it was designed at their old standards of eight apartments with parking that can't handle eight, that's their concern, and they just don't want to see this to continue happening.
Okay, you can call the roll, please. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins, for your outstanding service to our country, but due to the extent of the nonconformities of the proposed use in existing structure and lack of historical significance, I must vote no.
Mr. Protogiru?
I can, I can see the scenario that Mr. Hopkins described, the personal scenario that allowed the property to go into the nonconforming use. And I think if we look at these on a case-by-case basis, I am in favor of him having his special exception, considering those circumstances, so I vote aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I guess what I can't understand, as far as the parking issue is concerned, it looks like, it says that he has 13 parking spaces on the property himself, as it is right now, I believe, invited from planning?
Yes, sir, it has 13 parking spaces. That was in the application.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Appreciate it. That's all right.
I sort of, kind of agree with Andy in regards to the property, and I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
No.
Dr. Whibley?
No.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Mr. Nguyen?
No.
Mr. Frame?
No.
Motion fails. All right, R2, please. R2 is an ordinance granting a special exception to Melanie Nussbaum, authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-permises consumption on property located at 323 Gramby Street. By 7-0, the Planning Commission recommends approval. And Melanie Nussbaum is here to answer questions, if we have any. That's okay. All right, call the roll. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R3, please, and R3A, I guess, R3. Yes, sir. R3 is an ordinance granting a special exception to Dante Calcagni to operate an automobile storage yard on property located at 3465 East Virginia Beach Boulevard. Planning Commission recommends on a 7-0 vote. Dispense with the charter requirement. Just a second. And Robin Thomas is here to answer questions, as is Dante Calcagni.
I have a question before you call that vote. There are a couple of items in here that, there's one line in this ordinance that talks about us not issuing a business license until certain items are required. How do we, who handles making sure those items are required, and how do we communicate this to the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office to ensure that the license isn't actually issued until those items are?
Business licenses that are applied for through the Commissioner of Revenue's Office then have to come up and get a zoning check-off before they are actually issued.
Right.
So that's where we catch it.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
3A is an ordinance granting a special exception to Dante Calcagni to permit the operation of an automobile and truck repair facility on property located at 3442 Mangrove Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R4, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to Halabi One LLC to operate an automobile sales and service establishment on property located at 6400 East Virginia Beach Boulevard. By 7-0, the Planning Commission recommends approval. Anita Poston and Tim Boykin actually signed up for R4. Are they here?
Yes.
Are they? Okay. Are you here to answer questions? We will, sorry, why don't you have a seat? I'm sorry, I need to look right past you.
I don't need to, let's see.
Michael Mohammed?
Good evening, counsel, Michael Mohammed, 1216, Superior Court, Norfolk. I'm in favor of this item, and thankful for the job creation, the potential job creation that exists there. We're happy that this is an item that is voted on and that the public has, and an opportunity to hear you all discuss in formal session, and that more is being brought to the public square. What we're not happy about is the continuation of race-based appointments in the city of Norfolk, be it vice mayor or board appointments. And as I'm told that you all are planning to vote on the vice mayorship tonight, I urge you all to stop race-based appointments. Give everyone a fair shot. It is very unfair to appoint a person who is the junior elected official on council to the vice mayor just because of the color of her skin, and if you continue these type of race-based appointments, it would only further divide the city. Dr. Teresa Whibley has been a good partner and friend of all of the communities that she serves, and I have spoken with every African-American elected official, with the exception of Greg Underwood, who probably wouldn't remember, but I've spoken to every elected official. Kenneth Alexander, our senator, Don Hester, our delegate, Paul Riddick, our councilman, our now treasurer, Mr. Anthony Burford, and they all support Dr. Teresa Whibley. Ms. Williams has been a divisive force, even taking a personal point of pathetic pleasure and preference in disrespecting the senior state senator, Kenny Alexander, in front of clergy colleagues and constituents at the Town Point Club just a few months ago. And if this is the type of thing that we're going to do, allowing race to be the factor in these appointments, then we will never have a fair and a balanced city. I think that you all should do the right thing and appoint Dr. Teresa Whibley as the vice mayor. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the list of folks who are going to speak on R4. So, call the roll, please. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R5.
An ordinance granting a special exception to Noodles &amp; Company, authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment on property located at 1520 Colley Avenue. And for 5 and 5A, the Planning Commission recommends approval on a 7-0 vote. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
5A, an ordinance granting a pedestrian commercial overlay district development certificate to accommodate outdoor dining on property located at 1520 Colley Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R6? An ordinance granting a special exception to Big Lots Stores, Inc., authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-permises consumption on property located at 1819 East Little Creek Road, Suite 1851. And by 6-1, the Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R17.
An ordinance granting a special exception to Sassy, Inc., authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment on property located at 330 West 22nd Street, Suites 104 and 105. By 7-0, the Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R8.
An ordinance accepting a $16,506 award from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, 2013 State Homeland Security Grant Program, to purchase hazardous materials, equipment for the Department of Fire Rescue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
R9.
An ordinance approving an agreement between Hampton Road Sanitation District and the city for payment of construction or replacement of an 18-inch interceptor manhole located in Holorim Park at the intersection of Chesapeake Boulevard to Norview Avenue, accepting and appropriating up to $40,000 if and when received, therefore, and authorizing the city manager to receive such funds and execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R10.
An ordinance to repeal two subsections of Section 25-650, one subsection of Section 25-652, and five subsections of Section 25-653, and to amend and reordain Sections 25-649, 650, 52, 654, 657, and 660 of the Norfolk City Code, so as to add one new right turn on red prohibition, one new left turn prohibition, one new one-way street, 33 new stop intersections, one new vehicles over five tons prohibition, and one new automated traffic signal. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
No.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R11, please.
A resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to accept certain additional city streets for municipal assistance payments and to remove certain streets from the eligible list pursuant to Section 33.1-41.1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Dalton Robinson?
Good evening, counsel, Mayor Frame, Happy New Year to everyone. Congratulations, Ms. Green, for your appointment to council. I'm here because I normally would be home and read the agenda items, and when I have no understanding or I need a bit of clarity, then I will come to the council because I believe that you can clear some things up for me. On this resolution, and I understand that it's requesting that VDOT add certain city streets, and they have, they have an Exhibit A, which are the streets that are to be added, and then they have an Exhibit B, which are the streets to be deleted. Now, there's a whole list of the streets to be added, along with the maps, and I looked online, and I was searching for the streets which ought to be deleted, and they were not present. So I was wondering, why weren't they present, being that the council is going to vote on a list of streets to be deleted, but you have not the information of the streets to be deleted? And I was wondering whether some of those streets are in my community or some of the communities that I frequent.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Do you want to address that, or is there a list?
Yeah, I'm curious. There is a list.
I thought I saw it.
I don't think any are being deleted.
John or Ron, somebody? Come on.
I don't think any are being deleted. I think they're all added.
Okay, the motion to continue for two weeks, okay? Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, you know.